Yes, I, now I got it. And as usual, we'd like to start with saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us see who's here. Commissioner Zuber, could you call the roll?
Sure. I do not see Commissioner Tariya, but I do see Commissioner Eganberger.
Hello, yes, I am here.
Here. Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Commissioner Okon.
Here, from Wayne County. In township.
What about Michigan? Commissioner Singh, I have not seen him. Commissioner Watkins.
I'm here.
Welcome.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Commissioner Weber.
President.
Mr. Zuber, here. And Chairman Green.
Here, and of course, from the township, we've got our community planner, Patrick Sloan, and senior planner, Aaron Schluto, and welcome to everybody that's here. But before we go any further, we do have a new commissioner. Mr. Watkins, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Can you, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? Oh, let me say this, and I don't know if this is bending any rules or whatnot, but I would like to believe that just for a moment when people are talking, if they wanted to pull their mask down to do that, just for sound's sake, they could do that? Is that, is that okay?
That's a good question. I don't know. I know we have a mask mandate for the building itself. I don't know what the rules are in terms of pulling down masks to talk. Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, if you do choose to do it with the mask, just speak a little closer to the microphone.
Got it. No worries. Hopefully you can still, because everyone hear me pretty well?
Yeah.
Great, great. So, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to be appointed to the Planning Commission, to the trustees, and to the township supervisor. Thank you so much. After 20 years, I figure it's, if you can't beat 'em, you have to join 'em. So, after a long and, a long and very rewarding career in development in Detroit, we bring that experience here, doing tax abatements and development incentives, being that promoter for development in Detroit. Again, a Detroit kid who grew up seeing nothing downtown, and now you can go downtown, and it's very catalytic, it's very connected. We were a part of a lot of it. I can remember the first project being the Cadillac Hotel, and now look at, you know, maybe more than 99 to 100 buildings that have been redeveloped in that town. We bring that, that, brought that experience to the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation, where we connected that with the contractor base, being able to employ and engage Detroit contractors for those projects that would happen in the city of Detroit. Enjoyed much success there, left there, went to Wayne County, and became the deputy director of capital planning and buildings administration. So, all the county properties in our, well, 42 communities that were in Wayne County, we were able to shed a lot of that, that the county held in its inventory, and to be able to thin that between 2016 and 18. We left Detroit, and we went to Gary, Indiana, and Chicago, and I'll say it this way, we put our, took our show on the road and led redevelopment efforts there. Even became the president of the Gary Development Commission on an interim basis as a contractor. So, at that time, I came back home at the beginning of 2020, something called COVID hit, and who knows what that is? And we came to take a position with Rocket Companies, and we are now the Director of Government Affairs between, at the local level, state and local level, between the city of Detroit, state of Michigan, for our development projects that are happening in the city of Detroit and in other places where we might decide to develop. So, an interesting time to be doing development, a very interesting time to be doing anything, quite frankly. Very happy to be here and bringing that to our community, bringing it home to Canton. After 20 years, I think it's time, and I said it before, if you can't beat 'em, join 'em. So, I'm here, I'm looking to impact the outcomes that are happening here in our community, and I want to make Canton a great place to live, work, and play. So, thank you so much for having me here, and I look forward to doing my civic duty. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, before us, we have, we have a couple of minutes that we need to approve of. November 29th is first off. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
A motion to accept those, approve those minutes from the 29th, from Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote? Well, actually, we can do, we don't have to do that anymore, do we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow.
Only good thing about, well, one of the good things about being in person.
Okay, then also, we have minutes from our December 26th meeting.
December 6th, Chairman.
December 6th meeting. Thank you for correcting me on that. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion.
Doug seconded.
Who did?
Doug.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion on those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman Green, I just need to recuse myself on that one. I was not at that meeting.
Right along, we have an agenda of two items tonight. I wanted to talk to Patrick. Okay, so, I know we could probably wait on this, but we do need to ultimately replace the vice chair position. We are missing two of our members. Is it, do we want to wait for, you know, a full, full body board for that?
Might not get that for a while.
Pardon?
We might not get that for a while, since given the weather and COVID.
You want to proceed with, just going ahead and with that, with the ones that we have? I mean, that's, that's something we have to do, isn't it right, Patrick?
Yes. Typically, the bylaws require that at the February meeting, there's the annual election of officers, but in this case, where the vice chair is no longer on the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission will appoint from its membership a vice chair.
Right? Fair enough. Okay, so, I will want to add that as an agenda item to do that? And do we want to just do it right away, or you want to wait till the end? What do you think?
Do it at the end.
Do it at the end?
We have time to think about who we want to throw into the bus, I mean, nominee.
All right. So, can we add that as an agenda item for the end? Any further additions?
Your Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
As amended, right?
As amended, thank you.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Foster to accept the agenda as amended with the additional item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let us go to our first agenda item, which is Duncan, where we are considering a special land use on property which is located east of Hagerty, between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. It's a proposed fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Aaron, could you give us more detail?
I'd love to. Good evening, everybody. So, presented before you tonight is agenda item number one, file number 142-SLU-6948, item for, to consider a special land use for a fast food drive-through restaurant, Duncan Donuts. So, a little bit of summary, the project sponsor is proposing to construct a 1,836-square-foot Duncan Donuts fast food drive-through restaurant on a parcel that is located on the east side of Hagerty Road, between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. The parcel is split in between two separate zoning districts, which makes this a little bit fun and interesting. So, the western area is Zone C3, regional commercial, and the eastern area is Zone C4, interchange service. The fast food drive-through restaurant, though, is proposed to be constructed entirely on the, on the area of the parcel that is Zone C3, in which fast food drive-through restaurants are considered a special land use in the district. The special land use plans that have been provided for you include far more details than are typically required in a special land use plan, so many of the staff's comments are related to the site plan components, and you'll look at those in a little bit more detail during the site plan review process when this comes back to you. But those, those notes are provided to you as well as to the applicant, so that they can address some of those things before they come back to you at a future meeting. Little bit of background and analysis, the location, as I noted, is on the east side of Hagerty Road, between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. The net acres, it's approximately 1.75 acres, it's currently vacant. The surrounding zoning and land uses to the north is Wetlands Conservation for Outdoor Recreation and Western Township's Utility Authority. To the south is Zoned RMH, Mobile Home Park, Sherwood Village. To the east is Zone C4, and it's the location of the Downer Cemetery. And to the west is Zone C3, in which case there is Marathon Gas Station and a Jimmy John's that's located entirely inside the building. Now, one thing that we do look at with a special land use, in addition to the existing zoning, we look at the future land use classification. So, for this parcel, the future land use, future land use map classification is general commercial, and surrounding the, the subject parcel to the north, the future land use notice that is community facilities, and to the south, east, and west is all zoned, or I'm sorry, is all classified as general commercial. So, this would be, the proposed use would be in line with the other uses and everything else that's noted on the future land use map. The proposed special, the proposed use of the fast food drive-through restaurant is a special land use, as I noted. It is similar to the adjacent uses to the west, the Marathon Gas Station and the Jimmy Johns. Our findings on the special land use are followed in, a little bit later in this review letter. So, as I noted before, the plans that were submitted provide a lot more detail than our, than we currently review under a special land use, but we wanted to get into some of the items that would be of note during the site plan review process. So, the schedule of regulations, based on the configuration of the lot, the building envelope for this parcel is only 144 square feet, which makes this parcel almost undevelopable, without some assistance. So, the applicant submitted for a couple of variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals. They appeared before the ZBA on December 9th for the following requests. There is a required 80-foot front yard setback along Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. The principal structure is proposed to encroach eight feet into the required eight-foot front yard setback along Michigan Avenue, and 32.32 feet into that required 80-foot front yard setback along Old Michigan Avenue. The location of the trash enclosure, trash enclosures are not permitted to be located in a front yard, but given the configuration of this parcel, the ZBA noted that because there are technically three front yards along Michigan Avenue, Old Michigan Avenue, and Hagerty, that the trash enclosure could be allowed to be located in the front yard along Old Michigan Avenue. And finally, the loading area, excuse me, again, the loading area is similar to a trash enclosure, they're not permitted to be located in the front yard, but given that this parcel has three, three front yards along Michigan Avenue, Hagerty Road, and Old Michigan Avenue, the ZBA determined that the loading area would be permitted to be located in the front yard along Michigan Avenue. The updated plans illustrated that the proposed development is designed to comply with the other, all other requirements for fast food drive-through restaurants in the district, including the minimum frontage, 125 feet, the maximum front, maximum building height of three stories, maximum front yard setback from Michigan Avenue. Again, they're permitted 77 feet with the ZBA approval, minimum front yard setback from Hagerty Road is the 85 feet, they did comply with that already, the minimum front yard setback from Old Michigan Avenue, 52.68 feet with the ZBA approval, and the minimum rear yard setback of 30 feet. Now, as part of this, part of this project, there was a traffic impact analysis that was done, that was submitted by the applicant, dated October 19th, 2021. It provided operational analysis for the six intersections. This is a very interesting parcel in that it has six intersections with, with Michigan Avenue being a separated boulevard. So, within here, there's analysis provided by Wade Trim, the transportation engineering consultant, Wade Trim, reviewed the TIS and noted that it was prepared in accordance with the standard procedures and guidelines. They did recommend that the consideration be given to stop bars on Hagerty Road at the intersection of Old Michigan Avenue and traffic signs, to not block the intersection, to permit a gap in the queue on the northbound. So, this would be something that we would request, we would recommend the Planning Commission to, if they were to recommend approval to the Township Board, to make that a term of their condition for approval. Access management and drive-through lanes, the plans include a turning radii and travel path for the semi-trailer, garbage truck, and fire truck. It's a very tight site, so we wanted to make sure that that information was clear on the plans to ensure that there isn't going to be any issues or any damages to the property, parking, or future landscaping by any means of the garbage trucks coming in or, or any emergency vehicles. Terms of parking, the parking requirement for a drive-through restaurant is one parking space per 50 square feet of eating area, one parking space per employee, and 10 stacking spaces. These plans were revised to indicate that there's 540 square feet of eating area out of the 1,836 square feet of the total building area, which would require 11 spaces. The eating area dimension must be confirmed on the floor plan during site plan review. The plan indicates there will be five employees, so a total of 16 parking spaces are required. The app, the plans do show that there are 16 spaces provided, as well as they provided diagrams showing 13 stacking spaces for their use. Now, the Planning Commission will review the parking requirements in greater detail during site plan review, but this is to show that they have, they have met that standard. As far as loading spaces, one loading space, measured 10 feet by 50 feet, is required per the ordinance. As I noted before, the, the loading area was granted a, a variance by the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to be located in the front yard. So, there will be sufficient screening, as well as a guardrail along Michigan Avenue to screen it from, from motors along the roadway. The submitted plans also include elevation pages with material and color specifications. We've reviewed, we've reviewed these against the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and it appears that the, the building does have the 50% brick minimum as required by section 26.06, but the Planning Commission will be reviewing the building materials in more detail during the site plan review process. Landscaping and screening and tree preservation, a landscape plan is not required at the time of special land use, however, they did provide, they did note that a full landscape plan will be in compliance during site plan, site plan review process. We try to encourage people to provide as much information to us during this stage as possible, so we can provide guidance for them. There is notes that they will be requesting waivers to the landscape belt along Hagerty and Michigan Avenue. Those will, those will be looked at again during, during site plan review process, but it's something that the Planning Mission should keep in mind at that later date. Sidewalks, there is a five-foot wide sidewalk that's proposed along the site's frontage adjacent to Old Michigan Avenue, and internal sidewalks and crosswalks are proposed from the south property line along the drive-through lane to the principal structure. Lighting, a photometric plan is not required, but they will, during special land use process, but it will be required during site plan review. Signage, in addition to the variances that were submitted to the ZBA in December, there were, was a request to install a ground sign at the northwest corner of the property that would exceed the height for a ground sign. They were proposing a 12-foot ground, ground sign on the site, however, the Zoning Board of Appeals found that that did not meet the standards to grant them a variance, therefore, their plans will have to be revised to show that there is a six-foot sign. Currently, if you look at the plans, they include eight-foot, eight-foot wide, six-foot high ground sign in that space, and we've already noted that they'll have to make, make that change and make that modification prior to site plan review. Dumpster enclosure, there's one dumpster that is proposed on the east side of the building. Again, this was granted a variance to be located in the front yard by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The plans include details for the enclosure, including the height of the masonry wall, bollards, green gates, and screening, and all of that will be looked at in greater detail at site plan review. And now, for the special land use review standards. This is the good stuff. So, based on the items we noted below, we looked at the compliance with the standards of section 27-03C of the zoning ordinance as follows. So, the proposed fast food drive-through restaurant will be compatible with the adjacent non-residential land uses to the west, as well as to the residential uses to the south. The proposed fast food drive-through restaurant will be, will be compatible with the principles and objectives of the Canton Township Master Plan with regard to the general commercial classification on the future land use map and the commercial land uses along Michigan Avenue. The proposed use will continue to be adequately served by essential public facilities and services, subject to any requirements of the Canton Township Engineering Division regarding necessary installations for water and sewer. The site will have access to Old Michigan Avenue, which will serve to prevent curb cuts on Michigan Avenue. The site will have a pedestrian circulation system, including sidewalks along Old Michigan Avenue, and internal sidewalks and crosswalks for employees and visitors. The proposed use is not expected to be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed use will enhance the surrounding environment. The proposed use will not unreasonably interfere or discourage the appropriate development and use of land and buildings. The location of the proposed use will not result in, in a residential use being surrounded by non-residential uses, and the proposed use is expected to enhance the economic well-being and welfare of the township. Now, based on those review standards, based on everything that we've gone through, between Patrick's and my review of this, we recommend approval of the special land use fast food drive-through restaurant use at the, at the subject site for the reasons stated above. Note, excuse me, subject to the items noted in this review being addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, and subject to the installation of the stop bars and the do-not-block intersection signs as permitted by Wayne County. If you have any questions, I would be happy to, to address them.
Thank you very much for that. This is a public hearing. So, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, can we hear from the project sponsor on that? Is there anything you'd like to add? Go up to the podium there?
Good evening. My name is Becky Klein. I'm an engineer with PEA Group here on behalf of the applicant. The address of PEA Group is 1050 Rochester Court, Troy, Michigan, 48083. I would just like to add, you know, that we've worked with Patrick Sloan pretty carefully. I believe we've come up with a plan that meets the general intent of the ordinances. We have been granted the variances that we need in order to build the, the structure. We have replaced the sign that was denied a variance with a compliant one, and we do intend to meet with Wayne County to see if we'd be allowed to place the signage and the stop bars that are requested on Hagerty Road. If they agree with it, we will include those in our, our re-submittal package with the site plan. So, I, I'm here for any questions that you might have, but I think we have a good project here, and I'm pretty excited to bring this to conclusion.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I'm gonna go to, Aaron, do we have anyone in the audience in the Zoom, in Zoom land? Since.
Don't see any hands raised at the moment.
No hands raised, okay. All right.
Your Chairman moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Doug seconded. Doug, we can't hear you very well.
Yep, there you go.
You have to talk closer.
Just pull it a little closer to you. Okay, so we've got a motion on the, on the floor to close the public hearing at, what is it, 7:31, and by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna go to the commission, and we'll start with Commissioner Weber. In terms of questions, any comments, concerns?
Generally, I don't have a problem with, but I do have a couple of questions. First of all, this is strictly Duncan Donuts, it's not gonna be Duncan Donuts slash Baskin and Robbins.
It will just be a Duncan Donuts.
And I agree, it's a, it's an odd piece of property to, to try and develop anything with. I'm impressed that you're able to find something that actually fit on the property. The only other concern I would have, if you even want to call it that, is, and maybe this is directed to Patrick and Aaron more than anything else, is the only access in and out is the one entrance there on Old Michigan Avenue, and given the Mobile Home Park to the south, I just want to make sure that that's, that's been considered and that that's, you know, that's, that's workable between the powers that be in terms of emergency access, traffic flow, all that sort of thing.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. Our, our fire marshal looked at this as well for emergency vehicle access, and he was okay with the access. And when they did their traffic study, I think they originally considered having a driveway directly out to Hagerty Road, and they quickly abandoned that just because of the proximity to the Michigan Avenue intersection.
Other than that, I don't, I don't have any problems with this development, Mr. Chairman.
While we're on that subject, though, the, first, personally, I was, I was glad to see that, that is the ax, the only access. I, I drive by that property all the time, and I thought, it's, it's amazing that, that no commercial use has come before us for this, so. But I did worry about, okay, they're gonna want driveways, you know, on both Michigan Avenue and on Hagerty, and I thought, oh, that's just not gonna fly. So, this was, I think, a, a great solution, you know, to that. The, well, let me, let me get some other commissioners on this. Commissioner Watkins, do you, do you have any comments or concerns on this?
Actually, I did. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Real quickly, and I'm gonna stay in the Old Michigan Avenue vein as well, to the developer, to the engineer, I don't know if there are any concerns expressed about the conditions of Old Michigan. I was able to take a look at the, the actual pavement at Old Michigan, and it doesn't appear to be in the best shape. I don't know if there was, there was anything that was expressed in kind that would, that would allow any improvements coming off of the pad from the Duncan Donuts development that would allow for some improvement to that particular road. I think it's one of the things that, that will, that will impact, certainly, much more access than it's probably had in a long time, adjacent to the parcel, but I just wanted to make sure that that was a, something that was brought up. Probably not a Township issue, but again, at some point, I think it's, it could be a concern.
I would think that would be a Wayne County issue, being that that's a Wayne County jurisdiction. I haven't heard of anything, you know, going on in terms of the, the park there and the people going, because that's their, I think, is that their only access? It's Old, Old Michigan Avenue? So, I would think that any issues there would, would come up along those lines. So, any other concerns?
Got it, and I guess just the second point of that is, with that being the only point of ingress and egress, just wanted to ensure that, that clearly the, the property owner, as well as the developer, you know, understand that, that is a county issue.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes, thank you. I have had the same concerns that were already brought up about Old Michigan Ave, and I guess I wondered if you could help me a little bit more understand the stop bars? Oh, it is on, but I, my mouth wasn't close enough, sorry. So, when you talk about the stop bars, I understand the do-not-block intersection, which is kind of right there with the Old Michigan Ave, right? I can see that being an issue. Where, where are the stop bars? Is that, what, what, what do we do with that?
Where are the what?
Is that just a, is that a marking on the, the white line on the pavement that you have to stop? I was gonna ask that same thing.
Okay.
I've never heard those named.
Yeah. Right.
I had the same question, I just Googled it.
Well, obviously, you're smarter than the rest of us.
I think, yeah, I just, I just have a little bit of a concern with somebody turning right onto Hagerty Road from Michigan Ave, and then having to try and turn left onto the Old Michigan Ave, and having some backup there. Because I think, I can see it being a busy spot, which, you know, good, good for you, it'll be a goldmine, I think, a lot of people want to be there, but just wanting to make sure that we don't get some traffic back up there and have concerns.
Is that, that's typical, five, is it five lanes with a dedicated left, center, center lane, right there going on Michigan, or Hagerty?
There's, looks like it's four lanes.
Oh, it's only four?
Is there a dedicated left turn lane on Hagerty?
No.
No.
No, there's not.
No, you have to do, you have to do the Michigan Loft to get on the Michigan Avenue.
What's that?
Do Michigan Loft to get on Michigan Avenue, there's no, so there's no left turn lane, there's not five lanes.
Left turn from South Hagerty, right? Isn't that what we asked?
That's what I'm looking at, the, the left turn into the Old Michigan Ave.
Yeah, we're going south on Hagerty and want to turn left into Old Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, that's just two lanes.
Yeah, that's just two, so there's not a dedicated left turn lane, and, so the applicant had a traffic engineer prepare their traffic impact study, and they showed that there were not the failing levels of service at that intersection of Hagerty, Old Michigan Avenue. So, their, their model had shown that it would, in their, in their traffic study showed that it would, it would work without a failing condition, especially during those peak hours when they measure traffic at the highest. Our traffic engineer, representing the Township, reviewed the traffic study and agreed with the conclusions, but that's where the recommendation from the signage and the stop bar came from, where if there are events where it is heavier traffic beyond what the traffic study is projecting, we've at least got some things in place that would allow traffic to move.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to. I'm sorry, I just wanted to say real quick, I've experienced going through this intersection at a busy time.
Could you speak closer to the mic, please?
I've experienced going through this intersection at a busy time and it does get backed up going northbound on Michigan Avenue to turn on Michigan Avenue. So conceivably, you would have a situation where traffic is backed up blocking Old Michigan Avenue if people are trying to come into, make that left off of Hagerty onto Old Michigan Avenue. I'd be less worried about it if there was a dedicated left-hand turn lane, but conceivably, if you have that situation, someone, one or more cars are trying to turn into, onto Old Michigan Avenue, then turning left off of Hagerty, you could be backing traffic up down into Michigan Avenue then. And then maybe that's, maybe that's a rare occurrence, but I have seen heavy traffic at that intersection.
Well, the way I look at these coffee shops, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but most of the quick-hit business is in the morning when people are leaving, they're going to work. So chances are, most of the traffic is going to be coming eastbound on Michigan Avenue. And if they're going to make an attempt to get their coffee, they're going to do exactly what we're talking about right now. What kind of numbers are we looking at, maybe, in the morning?
You know, I cannot quote those numbers. The traffic study was done by an outside engineering firm. I do know they projected it to not be above the level of service requirements per the study, and that was agreed to by the reviewer that you guys utilized as well. If you want some more specific details, we could take a look at the traffic impact study and do that in some more detail during the site plan approval process. We do have another opportunity to look at it there. My understanding of it is that, yes, you're going to have some impact, but it won't take things to the point of failure at that intersection.
Well, I'm wondering how busy Hagerty Road is heading, I guess it would be north traffic that would be keeping people unable to make a quick left turn. And I don't know that that it's, I don't have any idea if that's terribly, if it's terribly busy, is it, would that be?
No. That's what I'm referring to.
Right.
I've seen that get stacked up there, people coming from those neighborhoods that are located further south coming to Michigan Avenue to get on 275.
Oh, okay.
And again, I don't know that that's an everyday occurrence, but, you know, it's something I've observed.
Commissioner Watkins?
Mr. Chairman, I think what's important to point out, I think, in connection with this request, the signage becomes much more important now in that if there is an ability to not block Old Michigan Avenue, block the intersection, now there's a clear pathway for those who are going to turn left after coming off of Michigan Avenue headed eastbound. Now we have a clear pathway for those to hit a nice queue on Old Michigan. Looking at the site plan, there's enough queue, I'll call it 50 feet, 100 feet on Old Michigan, per the site plan, to be able to get into the actual site. So I think the signage piece is going to be really important to this particular request. And I think, not necessarily connecting it at this particular body, but to go back and to ensure that it's there as we move forward in the site plan review process.
Okay, thank you for that.
Given, Mr. Chairman, real quick, given that Old Michigan Avenue is under county jurisdiction, do we have, do we have the authority to require that signage, or is that?
I believe the only thing we can have any say-so over is on the site itself, correct? Patrick, Erin? I don't think, I don't think we can impact signage, you know, that's actually on the roadway right away.
Well, and the reason I ask is, as Commissioner Watkins just pointed out, I think now as we talk more about this, having that signage, particularly the do not block intersection signage, is going to be critically important.
Well, I agree, you know, it sounds like it's very, very key. I'm not sure how we can get that affected by Wayne County.
Well, Chairman Green, looking at the planner's recommendation, it does say that it is, it's kind of, the recommendation is subject to the installation of the stop bars and the do not block intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County. So it looks like they're kind of already saying, yeah, only it'll go forward if Wayne County approves that. Yeah, so that's good, I think we have that kind of...
Yeah.
So the special land use would fail then if the county didn't permit that signage? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, not as, not as we write it, just because if Wayne County, for some reason, were to prohibit it, there's nothing in the traffic study that indicates a failing condition. This was more of, it is required as a condition as long as Wayne County will permit that stop bar and that signage. If for some reason Wayne County doesn't, then that condition would just not be applicable, but the special land use would be approved.
All right. Commissioner Eganberger, did you have any more?
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Zuber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I think this is a great land use for that property. I think it's going to be a nice addition to that area of Canton. I don't have any concerns. I think the exterior appearance, another black building, but okay, you know, it's popular right now. So I have no concerns other than what's already been expressed.
Commissioner Ocon?
Well, I have to say, before this came to us, I never knew there was a cemetery over there, so I learned something with this project already. Just a quick question, on the north side, you have a variable height retaining wall, eight feet max. Is that, are you building up the site?
Yes, we are, in fact. If you look at the site as you go from west to east, there's a considerable grade increase. If you drive down Michigan Avenue, you actually see the hill go up and then there's a lot of trees that are currently growing in there. It gets quite densely wooded. So we are going to need to basically bring up the area that we intended to develop fairly close to what that highest level is. So it'll taper down, but the highest elevation change on that retaining wall will be about eight feet above the current grade.
And what is that wall made out of?
It'll be a masonry, an attractive block unit that will be consistent with the materials on the building. So, you know, it'll be harmonious, it'll be nice looking. It'll also stand as a screen behind the landscaping that we're intending to put along that area, so it'll look very nice when it's done.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
I will just say that I think this is a great use for that property. I'm glad to see something like this going into that section of the township, and I don't have any concerns beyond what was already discussed.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. This is probably more for Erin. Believe me, I understand why we would not want a sidewalk on the north side, but it is an ordinance requirement. Was that part of the zoning changes on this, on the north, on the Michigan Avenue side? Sidewalk?
Site itself or the north side of Michigan Avenue?
The north side of the site, or, yeah, the north side of the site bordering Michigan Avenue. By ordinance, there should be a sidewalk because it's new development, but I understand, it's a sidewalk that leads nowhere and it will never lead anywhere, so I understand excluding that. Was that part of the exclusions to this in terms of zoning? Did they go before the zoning board or anything like that to eliminate that?
No, they didn't go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, but Patrick and I had talked about that a little bit.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm having a little difficulty.
Sure, yeah, this is, this is one we also talked to the Township Engineering Division about because there is a requirement for sidewalks in the township. And what I'll do is, I will, I will try to share my screen here, I'll see if I can pull that off. Okay. And this is a current aerial photo of the site here. And as you go east down Michigan Avenue on the south side, there are no sidewalks and there are no sidewalks on the north side of Michigan Avenue, too, for a number of reasons, one of which is the proximity to the freeway. If we go down to a Google Street View, there's, here's the corner of Michigan Avenue and Hagerty, and then as we go eastbound, there's quite a bit of grade there. And there's already a structure that slopes from the roadway itself up to the grade and there's very little room there to walk. So our engineers had actually discouraged us from applying that sidewalk requirement for safety reasons. And it's not to say that there will never be a gap that will be put in there, or a gap that's filled, it's just a matter of the timing of it. And it should be part of a larger project to connect people from Hagerty Road eastward and across the highway, including across ramps and things like that. So our engineers thought that this would actually create safety concerns if we carry that sidewalk east from that intersection.
Okay, all right. The other thing that I want to bring up is the position of the dumpster, which I think is a great solution over there. However, now you're adding potential noise from the pickups on that. So is that, that's going to be subject to some time limitations because we are near a residential area, the trailer park, right? So is, what provisions are being made to, you know, not do trash pickups in opportune times?
Well, we hadn't actually discussed that. We could certainly put a requirement in there to keep trash pickups between certain hours of the day. We already are specifying that deliveries are going to be done during off-peak hours because, you know, if we're having a large loading vehicle sitting there while vehicles are trying to access the drive-through, you have potential conflicts there. So, yeah, if there's a concern about a noise issue disturbing the residents to the south, we could certainly specify that dumpster emptyings will happen between the hours of, you know, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM or something to that effect.
So what is the standard in terms of the township? Is there something that's standard there or is that a site-by-site basis in terms of those kinds of pickups?
I think it's a site-by-site basis.
Okay, so we can make some determination on that? Any thoughts on that from the commission as to time, time limitation in the, let's say in the evening?
Yeah, I like to do 7:00 to 7:00.
You like 7:00 to 7:00?
Yeah.
I think most people are up and doing things between those hours and it shouldn't be too intrusive.
Okay, that works for you? Okay, all right, let's put that in stipulation. The other sidewalk, well, okay, so you're in compliance with the sidewalk on the south side, which also goes nowhere past your driveways, but we'll live with that for a while. I like the fact that you're, you know, you're able to connect that sidewalk which goes across Hagerty, you know, to that one. I know a lot of people look at that and go, well, is anybody ever going to walk there? You'd be surprised how many places people actually walk from time to time. And I'd be willing to bet you're going to get quite a few walkers coming down from the trailer park that are going to come down there to get coffee. So I'm glad to see some pedestrian access, even where some places are not, you know, as practical. Other than that, I think it's a good use of the site. I've driven by it many times and again, I've wondered, you know, man, I wonder why somebody hasn't made a commercial use out of this and now I see somebody's attempting to do that. So I like the idea. With that said, we did close the public hearing, right?
We did. Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
You can do whatever you like.
Oh, all right, I'll leave. Go home and have a glass of wine.
Free country.
I move to recommend approval of the special land use for a fast food drive-through restaurant on parcel 142990020-000. As the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to specific design criteria to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, and subject to the installation of stop bars and do not block intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County.
Can I put the dumpster?
Oh, 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 thank you, yes. And with limitation on the dumpster emptying to the hours of 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Court.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Watkins? Did you?
Eganberger.
Oh, Eganberger, okay. Again, I'm having some hearing issues here. By Commissioner Eganberger.
We'll do what we can.
This one, would you call the vote on that, please, Commissioner Zuber?
Sure. Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Okay, and this, then we'll go to the trustees and within the next month, correct? Okay. All right, our next agenda item is the Panda Express Restaurant. This is old business where we're considering PDD amendment and site plan for property located south of Michigan Avenue and west of Belleville Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. This was last reviewed by the Planning Commission at its August 2, 2021 meeting, and there was a public hearing held. And at that time, the application was postponed, subject to some modifications to the plans, which we'll get into in a moment. To summarize, the applicant proposes to split 1.3 acres from the Walmart parcel with the intent of constructing a Panda Express fast food drive-through restaurant in a 2,300 square foot building. The site consists of a parking lot that is part of the Walmart PDD and was originally approved in 2007. The PDD has been approved once before, and you may recall at last month's Planning Commission meeting, there was a recommendation to approve an amendment to the PDD for a Chipotle in another parking lot. So what I'll do is I'll just pull up the screen here just to kind of summarize some of the proposals in the area. So last month, the parking lot east of the drive along Michigan Avenue was recommended for approval for a Chipotle. The Panda Express is the parking lot to the west of the driveway. And both proposed restaurants, they displace a number of parking spaces, but as noted in our letter, there appears to be sufficient numbers of spaces. If we go south, south of the drive, here's the Walmart parking lot. And based on our observations as well as parking analysis, there's plenty of spaces for Walmart without the use of these two northern spaces where there are restaurants proposed. One of the reasons that the application was tabled back in August was that there was a site driveway that was proposed to exit onto Panera's site driveway. And a major concern was that there would be traffic backups at that driveway according to the applicant's traffic study. And again, I can share this screen again to illustrate the major area of concern. So up on the screen here is the proposed site plan. And specifically, this northwest drive, it's an exit-only drive and to the west is the Panera Drive. The Panera Drive is a one-way drive going northbound and it's an exit-only drive as well. And the Panda Express traffic study indicated that this northwest drive could potentially back up if there's heavy traffic on Michigan Avenue and cars exiting from Panera. If there are cars exiting Panda Express from this driveway, there could potentially be some backups there and indicated a potential failing condition in terms of the delay. So since that time, the applicants have done some minor redesign. They have not eliminated the northwest exit. And the applicant's traffic engineer and the township's traffic engineering consultant have discussed the possibility of keeping this here with the site design. And both traffic engineers agreed that... And both traffic engineers agreed that this drive could remain as an exit-only as long as the traffic circulation in this part of the site was in a one-way direction and counterclockwise, which is what the applicants have done. And what they've done is they have, west of the building, they have a double drive-through. And then this drive on the west side of the drive-through is one-way only. Additionally, the parking spaces that are on the north side of the building, just west of those parking spaces, it goes to one-way only. So once we're west of these perpendicular parking spaces, it's one-way only. So if there is potentially a traffic backup and there are some cars, there is an option for, if there's a car backed up with the double drive-through there, they could potentially use the southbound one-way lane and get to another exit on the west side of the site and then go southbound down this lane to the main drive. So there are some outlets that are possible if there are some traffic backups internally because of that one-way counterclockwise circulation in that part of the site. So with that design, the traffic engineers were satisfied with that result. And so we agree with their recommendation. Some of the items here, we had covered back in the August report, so I won't rehash a lot of the same things that we went over. The site is owned C3, which is a regional commercial district. And fast-food restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. However, because this site is subject to a PD agreement, a PD amendment is the procedure and not a special land use procedure. So even though it's technically a special land use in the district, unlike Duncan, which we just heard, this application would have to be a PDD amendment because the property is subject to that PD agreement for the Walmart site. The restaurant meets all the zoning requirements for the setbacks and building height. For the parking and loading, the first amendment to the Walmart PDD several years ago reduced the number of spaces to 761. The Chipotle plan that was reviewed last month results in a reduction of 51 spaces. And the Panda Express plan results in a reduction of 85 spaces, which would lower Walmart's parking lot to 625 spaces total. Based on the size of the building and the zoning ordinance requirements, there's over 1,200 spaces required just on a zoning, just based on a zoning requirement. However, the zoning ordinance does allow the planning commission to modify the parking requirements if there's data submitted that indicates that a different parking level is justified. Based on our review of 24 different aerial photographs, one of which we had up on the screen earlier, that were taken at different times between 2015 and 2021, these indicate that the parking levels are far less than the lot's capacity. Additionally, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, the average peak parking demand for a freestanding discount store of this size is generally between 357 spaces and 419 spaces. Therefore, the remaining 625 spaces are more than sufficient for Walmart, and we recommend approving this number for the site. Based on the size of the Panda Express restaurant itself, there are 31 spaces required based on the size of the restaurant and the number of employees in the eating area. Panda Express proposes 42 parking spaces, which partially makes up for the reduction in the number of spaces for Walmart. However, Walmart is sufficient for its parking demand. Again, the zoning ordinance allows the maximum number of parking spaces to be adjusted if a larger number can be justified. And according to the applicant, the restaurant will have 66 seats. And they estimate that about one and a half customers per vehicle, so a full capacity with 66 seats and eight employees could occupy 42 spaces. And that's their justification for the proposed 42 spaces on the site. And we're in agreement with that analysis. At the August 2 planning commission meeting, there were 48 spaces proposed. So since that plan was postponed, there has been a further reduction of six spaces, which we had recommended. Part of that reduction is on the north side, where near the access drive to the northwest, some of the spaces were removed to remove any conflicts of vehicles backing up, as well as additional ones on the north side to add more landscaping. With the architecture of the building, it's 50% brick minimum with also some stone and glass and ephes and metal. For sidewalks, there's a concrete sidewalk proposed to connect the existing sidewalk along the south side of Michigan Avenue to the north side of the building. And there's also internal sidewalks. For the landscaping, the plan is designed to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance for landscaping for the frontage along Michigan Avenue, the parking lot, divider median landscaping, the building foundation landscaping, and the mechanical equipment screening. Some of the required frontage trees are located in the front yard, not necessarily along the front yard berm, but are spaced off that front yard berm to allow for visibility. So some of that front yard landscaping is located in the front yard nevertheless, just not necessarily all of it in that front yard berm. The applicant is requesting a couple of modifications from the foundation landscaping to allow the depth of landscaping to be less than 10 feet. Based on the design of the site and the orientation of the building, we recommend approval of those modifications. And the required trees and shrubs for the foundation landscaping are there. Some of them are just located in other areas of the site. With regard to the lighting, the poles and fixtures are shown on the plans. There are only minor revisions necessary to make the illumination consistent with the zoning ordinance. And the applicant had emailed some light cut sheets today that would meet that requirement. So that's just a minor recommended condition of approval. For the signage, the Building and Inspection Services Division will review signs after site plans are approved. The wall signage appears to exceed the maximum allowable signage of the zoning ordinance. So we'll defer to the Building and Inspection Division on the sign administration, but it appears as though those signs may be a little larger than required by the ordinance. There is a Walmart ground sign at the northeast corner of the site that's proposed to be removed and replaced on Walmart's site. If it's one of those large multi-tenant signs, that will require planning commission approval at a later date. And it would be advantageous to have that at this time because now there's multiple tenants on the site that would benefit from that large monument sign that we see in many areas throughout the township. The dumpster enclosure is designed to comply with the standards of the ordinance. And there's a PDD agreement and access easement that have been revised to meet the township's requirements. The township attorney is in the process of reviewing some of the remaining changes, but it's been reviewed by the attorney at least on one or two other occasions. So our recommendation in that regard is that the PDD agreement and access easement be satisfactory to the township attorney prior to township board review. So with that, our recommendation is that the PDD and site plan be recommended for approval, including modifications to the landscape requirements to allow foundation landscaping depths less than 10 feet, subject to the receipt of revised plans prior to action by the township board that include the following. First, removal of the bumper blocks. Second, adjustment of the lighting plan to comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Three, reduction of the wall sign area pursuant to Section 6A.17 of the zoning ordinance. And four, any necessary modifications to the PDD agreement and access easement to the satisfaction of the township attorney. The last item I want to mention is that in our review letter, there was a note that there was an item raised by our traffic engineering consultant regarding some calibration of the traffic modeling. The traffic engineers had discussed this. And after discussing the data and that it's based on actual counts in 2019, the township's traffic engineer stated that the traffic report was satisfactory with no additional calibration data necessary. So with that, our recommendation is approval. And also, as I previously stated, the planning commission already had the public hearing in August, so there's no need for a public hearing, and there hasn't been a public hearing scheduled. So with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. We're just going to go right to the commission. Commissioner Foster?
I do not have any questions. I just want to point out, though, I do like that we are putting these type of restaurants in existing parking lots. I think a number of these buildings do not require the number of parking spots that they currently have. And so I'm glad that we're using that property wisely.
Just a, I guess a question that I just don't understand is the main elevation, which is the north side, which is along Michigan Avenue. That's where they decided to put their dumpster enclosure. So I just want to make sure the commissioners know that when you're looking at that north elevation, I mean, it's going to be blocked by an eight-foot-high, by 26-foot-long dumpster enclosure. Patrick, is there any reason why they didn't decide to put that kind of towards the back, like the southeast corner of the site where it's tucked away and that's not in the main view of the building?
We had discussed that with the applicants previously. This was probably several months ago. And I think they had, they had gone through some design scenarios where we had discussed having that farther south and west of the building. And I think the applicants can speak to that because they are on the Zoom call. But as I recall, there was, there was an easement in the area. And also, with the drive-through, the distance of travel between the building and the dumpster going through the drive-through and employees having to go through there, especially at night, they thought that there were some safety concerns, as I recall.
Patrick, I did not ask this, but if the project sponsor or representative is there in the Zoom audience, maybe they would like to say something.
I don't, I don't see either with their hand raised, but I've got, there he is. There's Valentino Mancini, the project sponsor. I'll go ahead and allow him to talk. So Valentino, if you want to take yourself off of mute.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner, and ladies and gentlemen. And thank you, Patrick, again. My name is Valentino Mancini. I am with NOR Architects, the architects of record for Panda Express. We are located at 150 Jefferson Avenue, Suite 1300 Detroit, Michigan. Also on the call that we have is Michael McPherson. And he was, is with Atwell Group. And they're located at 12745 23 Mile Road, Suite 200 Shelby Township. Michael is the civil engineer of record for Panda Express as well. Just to second on to what Patrick was saying, there are a couple of easements to the south and would be west of the building that prohibited us from actually incorporating the dumpster in those areas. Ideally, that's where we'd like them. And again, yes, the operational aspect of it, bringing trash to its closest point of route and in a safety manner crossing the double drive-through was one, was the other reason why we had placed it at the rear of the building. How we are trying to address that concern, because that was a concern obviously for the, for the client as well. So we were trying to place landscaping on the north side to really hide and provide some greenery to that dumpster enclosure as well. You could see that on the landscaping plan.
Thank you for that. I don't know if that helps any at all. Commissioner Ocon?
I think one of the things that's messing me up, I think, a little bit, I think on the drawings, the elevations, I think, are labeled wrong. I think they're, mix up their orientation. But that's my only concern is just the dumpster facing the major road. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners Zubor?
I have a couple of questions. One, Patrick, in your analysis, you said that the Walmart sign would be removed and replaced on Walmart's site. Do we know where that would be? I'm just curious. I don't, I don't think it's going to change anything, but...
Yes, I can bring this up here.
My concern is just, will it still be visible from the road? Which I'm sure Walmart has the same concern I do.
So the sign in question is just east of the site. Technically, that would still be on Walmart's remaining parcel. And it's an existing ground sign as you go in the main entrance of Walmart. It's just on the west side there. And I think it's, if I recall, it might be one of the typical single-tenant ground signs that we see. And so with Panda, I think the Walmart sign would probably be the same visibility as it is now because, and it would still be on their remaining site based on the proposed lot lines. It would just be something where if they agreed jointly to have a multi-tenant sign, they would all have to agree to be, to be joint tenants. And they would come in with a site plan for that, that would be reviewed.
And then my other question is, having tried to navigate the Walmart parking lot, can you zoom out on that, just a tiny bit? That intersection in the cross-drive, like where you come in and just, just north of there, on the other side of the lot from, like, towards the store, is it possible for you to scroll down? Can you scroll down lower on your sheet there?
Up, up or down?
I'm trying to go closer to the store.
South. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a cross-drive that goes through Walmart's parking lot, just on the south side or the north side of that, south side, south side. South is down. Yes. Right there, that intersection. And if you're coming through, for some reason, when we go to Walmart, we tend to park on the west side of their lot. And when you're coming back through there trying to get out, it's very confusing. That intersection is confusing because the one direction coming in from Michigan Ave, there is no stop sign. And people often will stop there. And you just sit there and wait. I'm wondering, is it possible to add a stop sign or would that back up too much traffic towards Michigan Ave? So in other words, if you're coming in off Michigan Ave, there's no stop sign at that middle intersection. And I'm just concerned with more traffic, that it's going to be even more confusing. Can it be a three-way stop or basically a four-way stop? Because there's a, an aisle, a parking aisle that comes in there, too.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And something that I might have to check with the traffic engineers on to see if, number one, if that's, if that's something that Walmart is agreeable to. But more importantly, number two is if adding a stop sign there and the stop bar, if that impacts the traffic study at all.
Yeah. Just, just because, like I said, you can sit there and wait and people come in and stop. And then you're like, well, just go. You have the right of way. They don't read lips. Anyway, that's, those are my comments. Otherwise, I think it, it looks good. I understand the concern about the dumpster enclosure. I agree. I think they have, we actually have two east elevations in the drawings. So I think that's a copy and paste error. But I think it'll look very nice. And it's, I agree with what Commissioner Foster said about using the outlots in this way.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Thank you. I appreciate the thoughts that have been brought up by fellow commissioners. Those were not things I would have thought of, so thank you for pointing those out. And I agree, I think it'll be a great spot. And I appreciate using the parking lots for something like this. And it looks good. Thanks.
Commissioner Watkins?
I think my concerns were addressed. I did see east elevation one and two. And I was really confused about what I was looking at. But again, it looks like there might have been error. One quick question, though. Height of the signage on the building? I'm not sure. I thought I heard it addressed that they might have to delete or remove some of the signage on the, gosh, I can't tell if that's on the east or the west side of the building now. Whichever side it is, is that code at this point that would allow them to negate that signage that's on the side of the building?
There's, there's a formula based on the frontage of the building that they're allowed to have. And based on the frontage, it looks like they're allowed to have... have, and based on the frontage, it looks like they're allowed to have about 94 and a half square feet. Plus, if it's a corner lot, which this may be because it's, there's a main access drive, so the creation of it would create a corner lot, there's a 50% wall sign bonus for a corner lot to allow it to be viewed on another side of the building. So, looking at some of the dimensions, it looks like they were over even with the corner lot bonus, and that's something we can have the building division look at. It doesn't look like they were over by a lot, but I think with both the text, the word "Panda" on the east and the west elevations, as well as the north and south where there's no text, but there is that circle graphic.
Yep, and that's what I was referring to. Thanks so much. No further questions.
Commissioner Weber?
Thank you. I just want to echo Commissioner Foster's comment about using up some of these seas of parking lots that we have in the township for other uses. I'm really glad to see that happening before we start developing a lot of vacant land and that sort of thing. And I have the same concern about the dumpster enclosure, now that I understand the labeling error here. The only question I have, I guess, and maybe I'm just not looking at this the right way, I just question how, I'm not opposed to it, I just question how necessary that exit is up in the northwest corner of the property. Looking at the traffic flow and that sort of thing, I don't see that many cars utilizing that exit, but maybe I'm wrong. Again, I'm not opposed to it, just, I guess, just questioning if it's really necessary. Other than that, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. The only concern that I have about the project is what Commissioner Weber just brought up, and that is that driveway at the northwest. As long as we can keep it as an outbound access and the signage works and people aren't trying to cut through there, I think that it will be okay. As for the dumpster, this is one of those scenarios in Canton, and there's a lot of them, where we view the project, the building, 360 degrees all the way around, and there is no good place for a dumpster. So, I'm feeling like their flow that they've got planned for the building itself and access to the employees putting things in the dumpster is key, and that location is going to be key there. And I think as long as the landscaping, as it matures, I think it'll mitigate some of the view that we have of that, but to me, it's just there's no real good place for a dumpster enclosure. It just, it is what it is, and it's a necessary part of their being. So, those are the only concerns I have. As long as the signage works on that one driveway and it remains outbound, then I think that that's going to be okay. I think it's going to be a good project otherwise. Anybody have any further thoughts or motions, anything that they want to put forward?
I move to recommend approval of the PDD amendment and site plan. On the mic? Okay, let me start over. I move to recommend approval of the PDD amendment and site plan on parcel number 132-99-0003-701, including the modifications to the landscape requirements to allow foundation landscaping depths of not less than 10 feet, subject to the receipt, subject to receipt of revised plans to action, I'm confused, subject to receipt of revised plans prior to action by the township board that includes the following: number one, removal of bumper blocks; number two, adjustment of the lighting plan to comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance; number three, reduction in the wall sign area pursuant to Section 6A.17 of the zoning ordinance; and number four, any necessary modifications to the PDD agreement and access easement to the satisfaction of the township attorney.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber? Yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. Good luck to those who represent the project that are in the Zoom audience, and they'll go forth to the trustees, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So, we have one staff referral, that is the Cherry Hill Village Site Plan Amendment. Do I hear a motion to move that to staff?
So moved.
Support. Got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner O'Conne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. As you all know, our vice chair of the commission is no longer on the commission, and so we need to replace that position, vice chair. I'm going to open the floor for nominations to replace Craig as vice chair.
Doug?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
What?
I said, you dog.
You asking me or telling me?
No, asking.
Well, so, okay, so why don't we start this way?
Okay.
Do we have a volunteer who would like to be vice chair?
I'll do it.
All right.
Ah, everyone stepped back instead of...
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Nominate Doug.
We have a nomination, a self-nomination of...
Yeah, I nominate Doug and support it, if that's what we have to do.
I can support it.
Support, everyone.
All right. Do we have any further nominations for vice chair? All right, so we will consider the nominations closed. Do, should we formally vote on this?
I don't think so.
All in favor of Mr. Weber, Commissioner Weber, being our new vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
You won the prize.
Just one question. Who had supported that motion?
All of us.
It was unanimous.
You could put, I think, Summer.
Yeah, I supported it.
Summer got in there first.
Yep, thank you.
Awesome.
Good to see everyone.
Okay.
We haven't officially ended yet.
We haven't officially ended. Do we have anything to add from staff or from the commission, anything to talk about?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
I have a couple of things I'd like to ask.
Go ahead. Now that you're vice chair?
What's going on with the master plan process? Is there going to be a steering committee? What's going to happen with that?
Yeah, we're currently in the process of reaching out with our planning consultants for scoping and making sure that the proposal that we get reflects the things that we're looking for in terms of the deliverables from the consultant, as well as the deliverables from staff. And among those deliverables will be a series of meetings in terms, including steering committee meetings. So, I don't have anything new on the steering committee or anything there, but we are planning a series of meetings, and Aaron has also been working on that quite a bit, so you can speak to anything that you want to on that.
I have a question. What's new with Chick-fil-A?
We all want to know.
Nothing's new. I haven't heard from them in a few months.
Okay, all right. I see the Amazon site is moving quite rapidly with a lot of their groundwork being done. I don't know if anybody's driven by there, but it's all...
A few gas stations on Ford Road's moving along now, too, I see.
Yeah.
And I see BJ's, it looks like they're starting to get ready to start there. I see they have a construction trailer on site and all that sort of thing.
Oh, I hadn't seen that in a while.
Yeah, their work is ongoing.
Are they working inside the building now, or...
I believe so.
Anybody have anything else?
One other thing, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Patrick, I had asked you, when we were talking about the market in Cherry Hill Village last month, I'd asked you if you'd had a copy of that reciprocal easement agreement for Market Drive.
Yes, I've got the easements. I'll email those out by tomorrow.
All right, great.
I've got them, though.
Great. I know, not like anything else was going on the past few weeks, so. Thanks, Patrick.
Okay. With that, I'd like to thank Mr. Watkins for his first meeting with us, for joining us, and with that, I will entertain a nomination to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Does anyone want to stay? I always want somebody to stay.